My feeling is, and I will admit my wife works the planning board. But the planning board in the town of Abington is a very well-respected and I think very efficient board with a great deal of experience between its members and a great deal of balance. They have an architect on there, they have a contractor on it, they have a member of your colony, planning council on it. They have a tremendous amount of experience and I feel they've done a tremendous amount of work in the town. One of the things towns are trying to do is simplify things for the process for a new developer coming in. So rather than have a new developer have to go to the planning board for the site plan, but then have to go to the zoning board of appeals for the signs, the amendment that was passed last year was to have them go to one group and one group only and that's the planning board. I think that makes sense and I think it should be left as is. The second, on the overall thing that has been stated about the constitution and the judicial appointments, this is the town of Abington. Number one, the idea that the president appoints a Supreme Court justice is not accurate completely. It also requires approval by Congress. The planning board is an elected board. You elect them. We elect them so we have control of what they do and what they say. And I don't think I've heard many complaints about the planning board in Abington. Well, it may be merits to the position on the zoning board of appeals. I don't think we should be saying that the zoning board of appeals, because they're appointed by the selectmen, are in the best position to make their cases and that they're therefore more impartial than the planning board is. I think the planning board has done a fine job. I think on Article Part One, I think we should leave it as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. There's just two people had their hands up. I could just hear from them, please. If you really want me to do it, I'll do it. I have to, I know that, but you allow me to do two more people?
Can't hear you.
There's just two people that, and I know they have an opinion on here, I would like to allow those two before I move the question, but however, that's up to you. I know that's a priority motion, so your call. Okay. Mr. Villa, please.
Yes. Fred Villa, 55 Barry Road. I've lived in Abington 65 years. We have a family business that's been around for 71 years. I've been to the zoning board meetings. I did go there because of television. I watched once or twice. I didn't agree with their articles, their proposals, signs, banners, lights. It all pertain to my business. Just to bring it up, it's not only business, but it's residential too. Special permits that they're talking about, I don't know if the town, the residents understand that if you want to put a sign up on your property, if you want to put lights up on your property, it could be a question. Businesses, banners, we're getting new businesses in town. Route 18 has a new business coming in, Vin and Eddie's gone. Do they understand that they're not going to be able to promote their business accordingly with what they want? I've been to the planning board meetings and I go along with the planning board. Very professional, very, I understand everything they said. I've been to the zoning board meetings, they haven't explained anything to me. I mean, my questions were, my business, 71 years, is being scrutinized by signage, lights, banners. So my question is, I'd like to see this not voted in. I understand it was on a warrant last year. It's on a warrant this year. From what I understand, the state is going to come out with new regulations next year on this. So the understanding is this will be on a warrant maybe next year? It's a possibility, so it's up to the town, but I don't understand it, so I'd say vote no. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Villa. Mr. Burbine, I think you had your hand up.
Just a couple of things. As far as a site plan review, yes, the planning board is in charge of site plan review, but this is for a special permit. There are periods of time when a site plan review is not required and just a special permit is. Personally, and I'm not speaking for the board here, personally, I think the function of a special permit for a sign should be with the zoning board of appeals. It has been there for years and years and years. Last year, it did get passed. I don't think there was any discussion about it. I know there was no discussion at the selectmen's meeting when they made their presentation as far as zoning changes goes. I don't think there was any discussion here. Surrounding communities, special permit granting authority, for signs generally rests with the zoning board of appeals. I think it should go back to the zoning board of appeals at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Burbine. At this time, I'm going to entertain Mr. Buckley's motion to move the question. And what that means is if you vote for moving the question, it's going to cut off debate. If you don't want to cut off debate, and because there were, I'm going to be honest with you, there's a couple of people had their hands up, you'd vote no. If you want to stop the debate and vote on the, if you have enough information, then you're going to vote yes. So I'll take the positive. All in favor of moving the questions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's been moved. So the next, I'd ask Lauren for a little bit of advice here because I think, Lauren, on the first part, Mr. Reynolds, and we'd have to take them separate anyways because that's a zoning article, and I believe it takes two-thirds?
Yeah.
Okay, and how about like Part Two?
All of them. The amendments to the board to the zoning bylaws.
Even Part Two?
Yeah, all of them.
Okay.
But because we have a motion just on part one, I think it's fine to do part one by itself and then go back to deal with the rest of them.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. So our town council has advised to take Part One first before we consider the other one. So again, you have to vote on a positive motion first. So all those in favor of Part One, kind of signify by saying aye. Let me just see if I can explain this. It would remain under the control of the planning board if you vote positive.
No.
No, just the opposite, that figures. Okay, so if you vote positive on this, you're going to return the authority back to the zoning board. Is everybody clear on that? Okay. So all those in favor of the special permit as filed with the planning board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The noes have it. So we'll move on to Part Two. You want us to speak to that, Joe?
So on Part Two, as was mentioned earlier, when the bylaw went into effect last year, there's different sections of the bylaw. Part of it is just purely definitions. So all of this Part Two is just clarifying some definitions. Moving sign, if people are familiar with those flags that kind of blow in the wind, they're called wind wavers. There was a flyer that was handed out earlier with a picture. The suggestion here is to add including but not limited to flag-style wind wavers, signs. So that would just mean that the definition changes. No action taken, just a definition. So it's clarifying something. Promotional banner, nowhere in the bylaws does it actually define a banner. So if the zoning enforcement officer went to go to a place and that had multiple banners that might not fit the character of the town, there's no banner as part of the definition. It was missed last year. So the suggestion is to add that in. The string of bulbs, withdrawn, so we don't need to talk about it. The window sign, all we had to do was add, rather than inside or outside, we stepped it up to interior or exterior, and it includes illuminated and not illuminated. Again, this is just a motion to modify the definitions in the bylaw.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
If you want me to come back, because you didn't make a motion.
Yes. Joe, would you explain that you didn't make a motion?
You want me to? If you want a positive motion, you have to do, as printed in Part Two, but omitting the change in definition to include string of bulbs.
So I would move to make the changes to the definitions in Article Seventeen, Part Two, omitting string of bulbs and the language that follows string of bulbs.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, the planning board voted to pass over all the items that follow. And one of the problems that we have in the town of Abington basically is not our signed bylaws, it's the enforcement of them. And that's the problem that we have, is that we are not enforcing the bylaws that we already have. There is some talk about having some more time made available so that someone can do that, and really until that's, I would love to see the signs that are not appropriate to our bylaws presently to be taken care of, and then I'd love to come back to the town meeting and say, now that you see the town with the signs that are there that shouldn't be there, that have been removed, that we can actually have another review of the bylaws and to do it at that time.
Thank you. Joe?
I fully support what Wayne's saying about having the signs removed that are not appropriate, and I think the zoning enforcement officer would also support that. And hopefully this year with some of the changes, they'll actually have support to go out and get out there a little bit more often. But you can't enforce something if there's no definition. So if you don't call out what it is, you can't enforce it.
Mr. Collins?
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street, member of the planning board. In our discussions on these proposed amendments, I think we all recognize that there's a need to address some of the sign issues in this town, that there are a lot of businesses who are starting to take advantage of leniency when it comes to signs and promotional banners and everything else in their storefronts and on their lawns. And I do commend the zoning board for all the time that they've spent working on the language in all of these amendments. The problem is that the language just isn't ready yet for consideration in the planning board's opinion, that we felt that some language in spots were a little vague. For instance, we had probably a 20-minute discussion whether or not someone could have a Red Sox flag in their front yard, and we still don't know whether or not it would be allowed under a lot of these changes. Rather than going through them piecemeal, what we'd prefer is to have the zoning board go back, workshop what the actual problems are in town, meet with our businesses to figure out the best way of moving forward, and then come back with a more comprehensive plan that addresses all of that. So I do ask people to not support the motion on Part Two.
Alex, please.
Alex Bezanson, 761 Randolph Street. A couple of things. Back to the enforcement, that's the biggest problem we have right now, is the enforcement. And at the last selectmen's meeting last week, I suggested before we renew any permits, we should make sure that the applicant is in compliance with all the existing bylaws. Second of all, tonight, at the selectmen's meeting prior to this meeting, we voted to form a committee consisting of one member of the zoning board, one member of the planning board, and one member of the board of selectmen, and hire a consultant if need be, or town council, hold public hearings so the businesses and residents can voice their opinions, televise these public hearings, and come back next year with a comprehensive plan once and for all, rather than doing piecemeal year after year. So I urge you to pass over this article and the rest of them in Article Seventeen.
Alex, one minute. Town council, it's my opinion that if they pass over this as a zoning article, you have to wait two years to come back. Is that true?
Unless it was substantially different. Correct. So a whole new set of bylaws would be substantially different.
Okay, so we could come back next year if the committee was so. So, okay. Anything further be said? Mr. Reynolds, please.
Yes, I would just as a voter suggest at this particular time that since the authority was removed from zoning, the authority has been transferred over to planning, so the ball's passed. So I would think that they could put together all their suggestions they're coming with tonight because they'll have jurisdiction, they'll know how best to deal with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Sean Riley, 26 Russell Lane. I urge you not to approve any of the changes in Article Seventeen. I too am an attorney. I've been doing this for over 25 years, and I have, I agree with, I think everyone in this building and in this town that we need to enforce the restrictions on our commercial signs. Everyone agrees to that. But what is being proposed here is some of the most improperly worded bylaws that I've ever read, and there are so many holes and problems, it's a disgrace frankly. And I thought it kind of ironic that a member of the zoning board stood up here and talked about how the zoning board has a lot of experience when the chairman of the planning board was standing right behind him, who's been on the board for 45, 45 years. And the statement that was just made, that the fact we kept the special permit for electronic signs with the planning board took away authority for other signs from the zoning board is completely inaccurate. The zoning board still has all the authority for variances for any signs. In having a special permit in the planning board's jurisdiction is not unique because we also have a special permit in the planning board for floodplain issues for multifamily and commercial, and one or two other issues where non-residential or larger development plans which are going through the planning board regularly should be addressed. Let me get to the Part Two that's here, just as an example of some of the concerns that many people and some business owners have expressed at some of the earlier meetings and hearings. First of all, we didn't know why they were putting in string of bulbs into the list of definitions, because the phrase string of bulbs doesn't appear anywhere in the bylaw. So it made no sense. But at one point, they were saying that a business could not put Christmas tree lights around a sign because they considered the Christmas tree lights to be another sign and not a decoration. They have now removed that thankfully. Under window signs, they've included the phrase now illuminated or non-illuminated. That's like saying red or not red, or clear but not clear. That's not proper drafting. It makes no sense, it's superfluous, it's irrelevant. But one of the main concerns in this Part Two, and I object to almost every article in here, under moving signs, they now define moving signs to include flag-style signs. And as Mr. Murray has said, well, the attempt is to just kind of further refine the definitions. But what you don't understand, or sometimes the writers don't understand, is how one section relates to a second or third section. And in fact, in Part Three, you see that Section 14 now includes the phrase moving signs. And reading that alone, you wouldn't know what that means. Well, what it means is moving signs are now prohibited in residential districts. Well, if in Part Two, flag-style signs are now called moving signs, and in Part Three, moving signs are no longer allowed in residential districts, you would conclude that flags now are not allowed in residential districts. The argument was, we don't know, there's another section that exempts temporary signs like that. But then in the definition of temporary signs, it says flags are not included as temporary signs. So there's this circular argument, but the end result is, with my 25-plus years of experience, this bylaw creates more problems than it solves, especially in Part Two and in Part Three, and we can go down the list. I urge you, and I agree with Selectman Bezanson and the members of the planning board that urged them, in fact, the representatives of the zoning board who went to the planning board hearing, said that they would go back and workshop this and meet with more business owners before they'd make this presentation, and that has still not happened. I would invite them to do that because I think the business owners also would like to see the signs cleared up because they don't want their competitors abusing it while they take, you know, the admirable avenue of abiding by the bylaws. Please do not approve these changes. They are not ready for change. They are not written well, although well-intended, they are not written well. I would ask you to verge no, do not approve the changes in Article Seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. Joe?
I'll echo what Mr. Riley said. I was at that zoning board, that planning board, when the zoning board came in and discussed these changes. Zoning board member, attorney, Reynolds presented material. So a good number of questions and issues and concerns were raised by the planning board. There were two other members of the zoning board there with Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds said he was going to go back and they were going to workshop these articles. The planning board said, you're going to meet with businesses and talk to them. The impression given was yes, they would. On the meeting, the Monday before Memorial Day, the zoning board went to the selectmen and they said they had not changed anything that they had presented before. As far as I know, there was no attempt made to go back and work on the articles, there was no attempt made to meet with the businesses. I feel that there was a promise made which was not kept. I think that there's too many questions, there are too many concerns on these. I recommend that all, I always think a motion to make to, on Part Two, I make a motion, it's getting late, I make a motion to pass over the remainder of this article, Parts Two to Part Seven.
Just as a little clarity, so first of all, I actually take offense to the worst articles ever written in my 25 years, Mr. Riley. But thank you, I've known you a long time, but I'm glad that I had that distinction. I didn't realize that changing the word inside to outside to interior and exterior was poorly written, but with that just being said. And I think that the zoning board did recognize the string of bulbs situation, and anybody that went to the meetings really didn't, excuse me.
Where do I? Where do I? I can interrupt the debate. Am I correct? Yep, absolutely.
I think this is getting a little personal.
I agree with Mr. Keel.
I think it's inappropriate. I think it's time to be modernized.
Okay. All right, Mr. Keel, and I agree with you, I think we were getting a little too personal on this. Okay, so right now, we have in front of us Part Two, saying, and Joe Murray has made a motion to, a positive motion to have those, yes?
Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, yeah. You pass over as a negative point, you always work, you, okay, but you, okay, I understand. Let me finish. You always take the positive motion first. Understand that if the, the body reacts on the positive question, okay? The finance committee can come up here and make a motion, reject something. If somebody on the floor stands up and says, no, I don't want to reject, I want to make a motion, we pass it, you work on his motion, on the person on the positive side of the motion. Is that correct? So we're going to work on, right now, debate has been shut off, and we're going to work on Mr. Murray's question to...
Mr. Moderator, Lauren Goldberg, three, town council. The established practice in Abington is to take positive motions before negative motions, even if the negative motion is made first. In fact, the planning board chair got up and made a motion to pass over all of Article Seventeen. However, there was a motion, a positive motion on Part A or Part One, so we're taking, we did Part One, then there was a positive motion on Part Two, so we're doing Part Two. I did hear the motion to pass over Part Two through Seven, but that motion was already pending. So we're acting right now on the positive motion under Article Two, and after that, we have to see where we get next.
Correct. Is that all right with everybody? All right, so we're going to react to Mr. Murray's motion to adopt these changes. It's a two-thirds vote, it's a zoning vote, so if you're in favor of making those changes, you're going to vote yes. If you're opposed to it, you're going to vote no. And again, it is a two-thirds vote. Everybody clear on that? Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Murray's motion, kind of signify by saying yes, aye. Okay, all opposed?
No.
Doesn't, motion doesn't pass. Now, another thing, Joe, that was Part Two. It's a pretty confusing article.
Motion to withdraw Part Three, Article Seventeen. Motion to withdraw, and we can do them all separately or?
You can do them all together if you want, because I think that's what your intention is.
There's already a motion to pass over, so unless there's a positive motion, we have three through seven, you can take one vote, motion to pass over. I mean, a planning board motion.
Okay, so I'm going to, is that clear? Okay, so right now, folks, we're going to take a motion to pass over the rest of the remaining articles, and that was going to cover everything. So all in favor of passing over Articles Four through Seven, kind of signify by saying three through seven, kind of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous, just passed over. Mr. Riley, would you like to take over? I'd like to go back to the ball pen.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. That concludes our business on the warrants for the Abbott and Town Meeting. I'd like to declare the Abbott and Town Meeting of June 6, 2016, to be adjourned and dissolved as of 9:55 PM. Thank you very much for your attendance and your attention to the needs of our town. Appreciate it. Thank you again to the cable TV crew for also covering this once again.